I don't remember which one that was. I don't know.
Brandy?
Nowhere now. Oh, I wanted to do the Germany.
Thank you, she's putting on your thing.
Is that next year?
You can scoot it up a little if you want. Take your hands and scoot it up.
Yeah, maybe. Wednesday? Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't think we have anything going on. Okay. All right. I haven't been there in a long time. He hasn't either. We've been kind of hermits. Last month.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone in our city council, our historic city council chambers, to tonight's special council meeting, as well as our viewers of cable channel 22 and our YouTube channel. That's City of Peoria YouTube channel. I would also like to acknowledge current and former elected officials who are seated in council chambers. Would you please stand if you can? Current or former, former city council? Yes? Thank you. I guess the current ones didn't stand because they're sitting around the horseshoe. Just reading the script. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your service. At this time, I would like to convene the old city council and town board. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Wiganback.
Here.
Councilmember Velpula. And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Velpula, Karen Velpula, sends his regrets that he's unable to be here, do it, to work. He works, he's a scientist also and travels all over the world because he's in much demand for his talents. I would, at this time, ask for the invocation by Minister Larice Hightower. Would you come, please? Give her a hand, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Will you please bow your head and close your eyes? Sovereign Lord, our God, the God that is rich in mercy and plentiful in grace unto all them that call upon His name, we thank you for this day. This day has been appointed since the foundation of the world, and we give you thanks. You are sovereign, you are the sovereign ruler, and we thank you that the hearts of kings are in your hand. God, we thank you that the heart and life of Madam Mayor Rita Ali is in your hand. We ask you now, Lord, that you go before her, that you level the exalted places, that you break in pieces the doors of bronze, that you cut through the bars of iron on her behalf, to accomplish your will in the city of Peoria. You have called and appointed Mayor Ali for such a time as this. Thank you for equipping her for the mission, for the duty, for the assignment at hand. Allow Madam Mayor to lead our city, being uncompromising and faithful. Guard and cover her so that she continues to maintain perspective and integrity. Thank you for the mandate you have placed upon her to continue to advance the kingdom of love, to advance the kingdom of peace, of prosperity, of restoration, and of unity as she continues to serve the city of Peoria. God, we pray that the city council and our city as a whole, Father, we pray. Lord, let us learn to do good, to seek justice, to correct oppression, to bring justice to the fatherless, to plead the widow's cause, and love thy neighbor as thyself. We ask you to lead us all, because this is not just a personal virtue, but it's a societal responsibility. It's your command. Finally, Lord, we ask that you deliver our city from violence, from the crime, from poverty, from the racism that plagues us. Propel the city of Peoria into your abounding love, your abounding peace, your abounding prosperity, and your abounding unity. We thank you, and we praise you. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hightower. Minister Hightower, Pastor Hightower, co-pastor, all of that. This time, I'd like for us to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk? We have one town item. Twenty-five dash ninety-eight is the official canvas results of the consolidated general election for the town of the city of Peoria, held on April 1, 2025, with requests to receive and file.
Trustee Grab.
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file.
Seconded by trustee Gordon Young. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at the city portion of the agenda. Twenty-five dash ninety-nine is the official canvas results of the consolidated general election for the city of Peoria, held on April 1, 2025, with a request to receive and file.
May I have a motion? Councilmember Grab?
I move to receive and file those results.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash one hundred is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to approve the 2025 neighborhood mini-grant applications in the amount of $199,200.
Mr. Manager? There we go.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our community development director, who briefly will walk through this item.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, manager. The item in front of you is the fourth year of our neighborhood mini-grant program. When the city of Peoria received American Rescue Plan money, one of the dedicated pots was how can we engage neighborhoods, and we came up with the mini-grant program. When we first launched the program four years ago, we had about seventeen applications, and this year we have sixty-five neighborhood applications throughout the city. Just really wanted to make this one of the last items for this council to vote for because they've been so supportive of this program, and make sure that Councilman Grab also had an opportunity, because one of the items included is neighborhood welcome to the West Bluff sign, right up on Hale's, where Hale Church used to be. So he wanted to make sure he got an opportunity to vote on that as well. So thank you, council, for the support of this program. It's been very, very popular with all of our neighborhood associations to allow them to do neighborhood gardens, neighborhood parties, just build, fix things around the neighborhood that traditionally they just don't have the funds to. They're always very appreciative. Our staff does a great job with it. So with that, I would ask for approval tonight.
Thank you, Director Doolan. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to publicly thank Director Doolan and the community development staff for reviewing these applications, vetting them, and ultimately awarding these homeowner associations and neighborhood associations in front of us tonight. This is a very popular program. It really helps us build social connectivity and beautification efforts for our various neighborhoods. So thank you. I want to give a special shout out to Kaylee Dre and Lumia Duwee as well, too, for their effort in this. This is very popular, especially within District Four, and so I appreciate their promotion and answering all the questions to ensure that we have this important program moving forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Allen, and I just want to say, because I am involved in this effort, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Say that again, the last part?
I am involved in helping with this effort.
Oh, I see.
With the young people that are involved. Yes, so I would like to abstain from this vote.
All right, very good. Councilmember Grab? I know you didn't have your light on. I just thought you might want to comment on this.
Well, one of my favorite departments is the community development department, because the strength of our community is in its neighborhoods. And it delights me that I have a chance to sign documents awarding to, awarding funds to the worthwhile organizations in District Two with Alex Carmona counter-signing. And I'm also very, very happy to see that something good has happened at the top of Main Street Hill, where the Hale Memorial Chapel used to be. I felt when we weren't able to salvage that historic building, that we needed to preserve that site, which is kind of like the unifying point between downtown and uptown, and entry point to the West Bluff, and celebrate its storied history, because we have many, many historic heritage neighborhoods in that area. So it was great to see that coalesce. We had a committee of people, some of whom are here, who helped devise what that particular sign's going to look like. I believe that sign design is going to be replicated in other parts of the second district, the West Bluff, especially as we try to have uniform signage welcoming people to the, I guess it would be the south-central part of District Two, since it now goes downtown. So thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to comment.
You're welcome. Would you like to make a motion?
I would move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Wiganback. Any other comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one extension. Jackson? Madam Clerk?
We are at presentations to the retiring elected officials.
Okay. I would first like to recognize Mr. Chet Tomzick. He's been serving for about nine months as our city treasurer. He stepped in at a time when our former city treasurer stepped aside, and we thank him. He is here, isn't he? Chet, oh, please come forth. Give him a hand. Thank you very much for your service. Chet, thank you. You have done a marvelous job in the time. You've been very, taking this job very seriously.
I am.
And you've been dedicated, and we appreciate your service. I have a resolution that I'd like to read to you. And it looks like this, signed by all the council members. And then we have another special gift. Whereas Chet Tomzick has served as city treasurer for the city of Peoria, Illinois from August 27, 2024, to May 6, 2025, during which he has given freely his time in an unselfish effort, and has demonstrated the highest ideals of public service by his dedication. And whereas Chet Tomzick, in recognition of his generous contribution of time and talent given on behalf of the city that will impact the future of the city of Peoria for generations to come, it is with profound appreciation and thanks for his service as city treasurer. Even though his time in office was fairly brief, he has earned the endless gratitude of the Peoria City Council and the residents of Peoria. Be it further resolved that the Honorable Chet Tomzick be presented with this resolution, which shall be entered into the permanent records of the city of Peoria, Illinois, and attested by the city clerk, passed by the City Council of Peoria, Illinois, the sixth day of May, 2025 A.D. That's the present. Also, Chet, having spent many days in Peoria City Council, we'd like to give you this memento to remember in City Hall. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I'd like to. This is kind of strange. After eight or nine months and twenty-two years, I don't know why I'm here. This is the man we were honoring tonight. But thank you, Mayor, for nominating me for this position for the city council. Thanks to my wife for putting up with me for this last nine months. Folks around the horseshoe here, you've got a lot of work to do. There's some real challenges coming up, and you've got the right people around the table to do it. So congratulations. Thank you again, Mayor, and good luck, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, Chet. You can pick that up a little bit later. You can take that one, and then we'll get you the other one.
All right, thank you.
Our final resolution goes to someone who's been around the council for a little while here. About twenty-four years, I believe. Like to present this resolution to my colleague and friend, Mr. Charles V. Grab. Can you come forth, Councilman Grab? When you've been around this long, not just as a district council member, but also as an at-large council member for a period of time, but all the years that he's served so well, he's part of the institution, I would say. You're an institution, Chet Grab.
I know.
I'd like to read this resolution and just thank you for your great service for many years. Resolution, City of Peoria, Illinois, Charles V. Grab. Whereas Charles V. Grab has honorably served as an at-large council member for the city of Peoria, Illinois from May 1995 to May 2007, and again as a second district council member from May 2013 to May 2025, dedicating a total of twenty-four years to public service with unwavering commitment while demonstrating the highest ideals of public service. And whereas during his combined tenure, Charles V. Grab, by his many years of efficient service as council member representing the residents of Peoria, served as mayor pro tem, served on the Peoria Civic Center Authority, the Neighborhood Development Commission on Human Resources, liaison to the Budget Committee of the Town of the City of Peoria, the Downtown Development Corporation, chairperson for the City of Peoria Memorial Day Celebration, and the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees. There's something in there that I did not see, and that was, sorry about that, but he's been our liaison also for the township of Peoria. Did I say that? If I didn't, that's another one. Earning the gratitude and respect of the community members of Peoria for his leadership and service. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, on behalf of its members, officials, employees, and residents of the city of Peoria, extends sincere and profound appreciation and thanks to Charles V. Grab for his many years of dedicated service as a Peoria City Council member. Be it further resolved that the Honorable Charles V. Grab be presented with this resolution, which shall be entered into the permanent record of the Peoria, excuse me, of the city of Peoria and attested by the city clerk, passed by the City Council of Peoria, Illinois, the sixth day of May, 2025. And we also have, of course, the same picture, Peoria City Hall.
Yes, nice.
All right. You take your time.
You know, Mayor, it's kind of strange that we've come full circle here with Dave Kaler right there, because when I arrived here in 1995, my seatmate was David M. Kaler. Can you believe that? Because Mayor Malu didn't know what to do with Eric Turner and me. We were both elected, and we weren't supposed to be. You know how that goes. And so he tried to keep us apart, me on one side of the horseshoe and Eric on the other. And Dave Kaler was to make certain that there was a very salutary and good influence placed on me at all times. And Dave, you did okay. But he helped get me acclimated to the job. And you know, when you're first elected, you think you know everything. And you really don't know very much, but if you're smart, you'll learn and you'll listen. And so I had the pleasure of working with twelve different city councils and five different mayors, I don't know how many city managers. And every two years, if you think about it, with the way our government is structured, the city council changes. Even one person can change the chemistry of the council. And I trust that we'll keep Peoria growing. Senator Kaler will remember when he was councilman for the third district and I was at large, that one of the biggest challenges we had was diversifying our economy. We knew we had a lot of dependence on heavy manufacturing, and we knew that was unhealthy if things went awry. So we set about to diversify the economy. And out of that came, with John Morris's help and other members of the council, that four-year medical school, Peoria burgeoning medical destination, a healing center, which we're so proud of today. And out of all those years, twenty-four years I was there, we had the growth cell strategy that Mayor Malu was so proud of. We did not want to lose growth to the north and to the northwest. We thought that would handicap Peoria for many years to come, and so we grew our city to where it's now fifty-five square miles. And I think now, and this is what's so interesting, we grew it, we developed that far north area and the spectacularly beautiful city of Peoria. We have everything from the valley all the way out to the cornfields and beautiful neighborhoods to the north, the heritage neighborhoods to the south, everything you can imagine downtown that's developing right now like you wouldn't believe. But we're now bringing the energy from the development, the growth cells, back to the heart of our city, to our downtown. And so when I read all these negative comments, oh, you know, nothing's happening downtown, blah, blah, blah. No, not true. We are redesigning our downtown. We have some $20 million out of that American Rescue Act to redirect two of our major corridors, Adams and Jefferson. And we're going to have 6,600 people living downtown by the end of '26. It's no longer the downtown that I grew up with, or you, Mayor, where we just primarily had a commercial office, legal center. It's now a neighborhood as well. So I'm so proud to see the ebb and flow of development. Our best days are ahead, but one of the things that I'll also say is some of the people that have come to Peoria to live here, like Alex Carmona, they're here because they see the strengths of Peoria. Some of us who have been here a long time, we just can't see the forest for the trees. But we should, because we can be anywhere in Peoria in just a few minutes. We have an affordable city still, and we hope to keep it that way. And I agree with you, Mayor, our golden age is at hand, and I know this council's going to do what's right. And at least several of you, I've said on more than one occasion, I don't want to hear any comments that I didn't sign up for this, because my answer is, yes, you did. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash one oh one is a consideration of a motion to request approval of the resolutions commending outgoing elected officials and to direct the city clerk to spread the resolutions upon the permanent record.
May I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Kelly. I'm trying to look around the flowers. Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any comments? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Grab. You have a wealth of institutional knowledge that, as someone who was in their first term, I leaned on you a lot, especially as a fellow district council member, and you taught me the number one rule is listen to your constituents. And so I appreciate everything, all the conversations. We've agreed on some things, we've disagreed on some things, and that's the beautiful part of this space. But I appreciate you always picking up my phone calls and answering those questions. And please continue to be a resource, because you're taking a lot of institutional knowledge with you, and we're going to still need that pulse. So again, thank you so much, sir. Congratulations. And I'm sure whatever your next journey is, you're going to continue to be amazing, because you're an amazing individual. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Councilman Grab, it's been an honor to serve with you in this body for almost a decade. Also, to be one of your constituents for the last twelve years, I look back on a lot of hours of phone calls that we've had over this time trying to work out issues, not just in our district, but in the city as a whole. I've learned a significant amount from you, and
and it's really been an honor to work with you. And we've had many very heated arguments across the chamber on issues, but we've always been able to walk out of the room and figure out a solution. And the true definition of working together in a bipartisan fashion to get the job done and do what's best for a community. And so I thank you tonight for that and for your dedication to this community, the leadership that you've showed me, as well as this great city of Peoria, especially your focus on the second district, as you coined "second to none." It's been an honor to live in your district and have the opportunity to vote for you and be one of your constituents over this last 12 years. Thank you for your service.
Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, what should I say first? So coming onto this council, for me, one of the reasons why I felt as comfortable as I did is because you were my dean in high school. And look how far we've come, right? And I often said, I ain't scared of you. Now, I was scared of you back in the day, right? I knew not to come to your office, but what I will tell you is, from the time I was a young girl, I always had the utmost respect for you because you meant business. And that was no different when you were a teacher and administrator, and certainly as a city council member. Your passion for people, your passion for making a difference, I mean, is just through and through, and it's unmatched. One of the things I think that you really have made your mark on is serving as a historian. I don't know where you store all this information and knowledge at. I mean, even the relevant stuff that you sometimes, you know, just kind of share, you know, I mean, it's relevant to you. But, you know, sometimes you just go on down this path, and I'm like, where is this knowledge coming from? But I tell you what, at the end of the day, it's always going to land somewhere, and it's going to make a difference. And I hope to still be able to rely on you for the expertise that you have in so many different areas. I want to thank you from helping that young lady grow into a woman, and then also as a colleague. I appreciate you very much. Good luck to you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Grab, I will miss these lunches that we have and these phone, many, many phone conversations we had. And I really want to echo all the sentiments of my colleagues. What I'll miss the most is your million-dollar vocabulary, as I've mentioned so many times. I will be able to put my dictionary away now for a while, unless somebody replaces you. But thank you very much for all your, all the work you've done for the City of Peoria, your commitment. And it's been wonderful to watch you, and it's been wonderful to work with you. And all the best in retirement. And people are asking me what you're going to do. As I don't know if you've now told me, I don't know if you're going to full retirement or not, but all the best to you for the rest of your life. You take care. Thank you very much again.
Councilmember Riggentbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you're noticing a little bit of repetition here as we talk about our colleague here. Whether we call him our esteemed colleague or the institution that the mayor referred him to, or somebody who needs to be institutionalized. We all are going to miss you, Councilman Grab, from the bottom of my heart. We have been through so much in these last 12 years that we've been together on this council. And all of the things that my colleagues have said have hit the nail square on the head. And there's one other word that I like to use as I talk about governing at the municipality level, it's collaboration. And that's probably one thing that Councilman Grab has down pat. You don't have to agree on everything every time, but when you're talking about things at the city level, it transcends so many of those petty differences that collaborating, putting your arm around each other at the end of a long meeting, those are the things that get things done. And as the councilman said, take a look at what's happening downtown. There is just so much buzz in various parts of our city. And I never particularly cared that "second to none" as a fellow district council member. But I'll tell you what, the future's bright, and a lot of it's thanks to your leadership these last 24 years. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Grab, you and I first, you may not remember, but you and I first met when you and Eric Turner joined the council. And I was a pest occasionally to you all those years. When I came on to the council, I think it's accurate that I spoke with you more than I spoke with any other member of the council and valued not only your opinion or your, you know, we would get into fairly deep discussions on any number of topics, and it was, but your passion was second to none, to coin a phrase. And it's not that your passion drove you. Your ideas drove your passions. But we're going to miss the, I'm sorry to be redundant, but the institutional memory that you brought to the table. And I look forward, I do not look forward to you being gone, but I do look forward to continuing our relationship. There may be a few things, like a lot, that still you know better than I about this city. And I value that. That only helps me. And so God bless you, and best of luck to you, Chuck.
Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I echo all the sentiments of my colleagues, I think. I think we've had some great remarks here. Yes, "second to none" is a catchy slogan, but, you know, he really stands behind it. It would be empty if he didn't stand behind it, but he really does. I could tell you the neighborhood associations, and I'm in the second district myself as a resident and for my work. And my association, my particular one, loves what Chuck has done. He's been very involved, very much advocated for us. And I know that he's done the same for other neighborhood associations in the second district. It is very much appreciated throughout the entire district. I'm very impressed. And just for Peoria as a whole, I think he's kind of a cheerleader for Peoria. I think we need that. You know, extolling the virtues of our city time and again, because you do see a lot of naysayers online and on town square, I guess. But, you know, Chuck is always, you know, been kind of a beacon in terms of where we're going, rebuilding our downtown, which is part of his district, and what we can become. So, yeah, I, you know, I've had a lot of phone calls with Chuck. You know, it's taken minutes, and you make me think, different, you know, ways to look at issues. Being institutional knowledge, absolutely. You know, I hope that knowledge isn't going to go away. I know it won't. I know we'll still have it here in Peoria. If anyone has any questions or looks for guidance, I'm sure Chuck will pick up his phone. So thank you, and happy trails. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Grab, I just want to thank you. It's been a fast four years, and one of the things I appreciate so much about you, you have worn so many different hats in your role as an elected official. And I can see that your passion today is as passionate as it was when you started on the council 24 years ago. And I truly believe that we have a better city because of your service to the City of Peoria. So thank you for your leadership, sir. Thank you for your knowledge. And I look forward to continuing to draw from it in the future. So best wishes to you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And lastly, I want to say, Councilman Grab, a lot of people will look at us, and they'll see our differences. They may even see us interact and see some differences. But what they may not realize is that we have a lot in common. We share a lot of common values, and we know that. Everybody doesn't know that. So I want to say that publicly, that we share many common ideas and values. I appreciate that we may go about things a different way, but we're going in the same direction. We want the same things most often. So I want to thank you for your leadership, for your mentorship, and for your leadership and service for so many years. Thank you. Let's give him another round. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion on the floor?
Do we already do that? Yes, we do. It was moved by Councilmember Kelly and seconded by Councilmember Euler.
Okay, if there's no more comments, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are adjournment of the old council.
Okay, so this is a 10-minute intermission. So this is intermission, and that concludes the first part of our meeting. We will now take a brief intermission while our staff prepares the room for the incoming council. The meeting will resume in exactly 10 minutes. We'll see you then. We'll see you then. Time is up. Time is up. 10 minutes is up. Hey, Chief. Please take your seats, everyone. This is downstairs. Everyone, please take your seats. Everyone, please take your seats. At this time, we will administer the oath of office. And we will begin with the City Clerk, Stephanie Tar. Please repeat after me. I, Stephanie Tar...
I, Stephanie Tar...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
Of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of City Clerk of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Of City Clerk of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
...ex officio town clerk by ordinance...
Ex officio town clerk by ordinance...
...according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Clerk Tar. My girls are coming up. My girls? Robin? My mom is watching from home this year. She's 87 years old, and she decided she's not coming out tonight.
Please raise your right hand. I, Rita Ali...
I, Rita Ali...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of Mayor...
...of Mayor...
...of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee...
Town trustee...
By virtue of office...
By virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Next, if we could have Jim Montalongo, please. And you can bring up whoever you would like.
Please raise your right hand. I, Jim Montalongo...
I, Jim Montalongo...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of Treasurer...
Of Treasurer...
...of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Ex officio town collector...
Ex officio town collector...
By ordinance...
By ordinance...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Okay, next we'll go into our district council members. If I could have Denise Jackson, please.
Could I have my uncle June? Would you like to come up, please? And Marilyn? Come on up here. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I, Denise Jackson...
I, Denise Jackson...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of council member...
Of council member...
First District...
First District...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Uncle June. Thank you, ma'am.
If we could have District Two Councilmember Alex Carmona.
My wife doesn't want to come up, but I'm making her come up.
Please raise your right hand. I, Alex Carmona...
I, Alex Carmona...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of council member Second District...
Of council member Second District...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, if we could have Timothy Riegenbach.
Please raise your right hand. I, Timothy D. Riegenbach...
I, Timothy D. Riegenbach...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of council member Third District...
Of council member Third District...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
Town trustee by virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, if we could have Andre Allen, please.
Please raise your right hand. I, Andre Allen...
I, Andre Allen...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
And the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of council member Fourth District...
Of council member Fourth District...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee...
Town trustee...
By virtue of office...
By virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, next if we could have Fifth District Councilmember Dennis Seer.
One more, one more. Thank you. Thank you.
I, Dennis Seer...
I, Dennis Seer...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of council member...
Of council member...
Fifth District...
Best District, I mean Fifth District. Sorry. Of the City of Peoria, Illinois...
Town trustee...
Town trustee...
By virtue of office...
I'm sorry?
By virtue of office...
By virtue of office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next, if I could have Latrina Leary, Town Supervisor.
Please raise your right hand. I, Latrina Leary...
I, Latrina Leary...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
...of the State of Illinois...
...of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of supervisor...
As supervisor...
...of general assistance...
Of general assistance...
Town of the City of Peoria...
Town of the City of Peoria...
Illinois...
Illinois...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And then the final person we have on our list is Andrew Curry. He won Town He won Town Supervisor. If you don't mind coming up, Andrew, and I'll present you with your certificate of election. Now, Andrew, his term does not begin until January, so he will not be sworn in tonight, but he will be sworn in January 1st. But we would like to recognize him tonight because, you know, he had to run to an election. He deserves to be recognized, so thank you, Andrew.
At this time, we will convene the new city council and town board. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Carmona.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Velpula and Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, please proceed, Madam Clerk.
We are at the remarks by newly elected officials.
Okay. We are going to start with our First District Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, giving honor to God, and first, I would like to thank all of the people in the First District who voted me back in for reelection. It has been a fast four years, and I must say that we have just, we haven't begun to scratch the surface, but I am honored to serve residents once again in the First District, and I serve in the spirit of relatives who were displaced 20, 30, 40 years ago. People like my grandmother Maggie and Albert Jackson, who lived on Sixth Street, and that was the motivation for me deciding to seek this seat. So I look forward to the next four years in that spirit, also in the spirit of all of the other residents in the First District, and I just want to say, Madam Mayor and newly elected council members, I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I went a little bit out of order. I'd like for you also, Madam Clerk, to give your remarks, please.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I just want to begin by thanking everyone who believed in me and helped me get to this moment. You know, in 2021, I thought that was a remarkable year with the COVID restrictions and trying to campaign and trying to meet with people, but then again, we were met with another, I don't know if you would call it an obstacle, with additional signatures that we had to get this year, and it impacted a number of us, and it was something that we could not do alone. I mean, we really needed a team, and I appreciated everyone who believed in me and helped me get these signatures. For some of us, Madam Mayor, as you know, we had to get over 1,000 signatures, so thank you to everyone who helped me with that. I couldn't have done it alone. So I just want to say that I hold a deep respect for the people. I'm privileged to serve, and I'm truly grateful for the faith you've placed in me to carry me out, in me to carry out the work of the city clerk on your behalf for another term. And I especially want to thank my husband, Tom, who's sitting behind me, for his unwavering support. You know, I couldn't have done it without him, and you know, I was cranky a few nights, so, thank you. But also, I want to thank my children. Not all of them could be here tonight, two of them were, but Teague and Spencer, Connor, Gavin, Kristen, Theron, and Ruby, for their constant support, love, and patience. They're the heart of everything that I do and the reason I strive to serve with purpose and dedication, so thank you, guys. And most importantly, I know that she's watching, she can't help herself, I want to thank my predecessor, Beth Ball. Beth, your belief in me and your willingness to give me the opportunity to serve this community set everything in motion, and I appreciate that. She gave me a huge opportunity to move to Peoria and to change my life, and I'm forever thankful and grateful for your mentorship and trust in me, so thank you, Beth, thank you for all that you've done. So, and thank you all. I look forward to continuing the work of the city clerk with integrity, transparency, and steadfast commitment to the people we serve. Thank you.
City Treasurer, Jim Montilongo, would you like to come up here? Yes, make remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, for privilege of the floor. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, esteemed colleagues, friends, family, and fellow residents, thank you for being here today. Tonight, I am so honored to have taken an oath to serve the people of Peoria. It is with a profound sense of responsibility that I promise to safeguard the financial well-being of our beautiful city and to serve every resident with integrity, transparency, and diligence. I would like to begin first by thanking my family, who have been my support throughout my endeavors of public service over the last 12 years. Thank you for your patience and belief in this journey. And to the voters, thank you for placing your trust in me again and allowing me to serve in a new capacity as Peoria City Treasurer. The mission that I have for treasurer is simple but essential: maintain fiscal integrity, modernize systems, and ensure that our financial practices reflect the values of everyone in our city. As I have said throughout my campaign, I see this office as a bridge connecting city government with the people we serve. I will open up communications with the residents of Peoria in multiple channels: in person, electronically, and by postal mail. The residents deserve to know the details of how their hard-earned tax dollars are collected and used. I look forward to working with all the members of our city council, the mayor, department leaders, and community partners to continue building a financially strong and equitable Peoria. I am honored to serve as your treasurer, and I am ready to get to work. Thank you for everyone, and I look forward to working with you.
Township Supervisor, Latrina Leary.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for those who went out, who voted, who made a difference, and who are actively making a difference, even though there are multiple people sitting around the horseshoe and those who are sitting in the audience like myself. We got some big shoes to fill. There's a lot of work to be done, but I want to thank everyone that made it possible for me to be here. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to my husband. It is a true sacrifice to run for office, to run for a public office, and he has been instrumental in helping me along this way, and I don't thank him enough, but I have to say, you know, part of me being here is because of him. I want to say thank you to my children, Kalen and Trey. They understand, and Mom, you know, Mom, sometimes I'm not at home. I have a lot of work to do, I'm very active and busy in the community, and sometimes they're tagging along with me, but they understand that this work is important and that this work is necessary. I want to thank my mom. My mom is sitting in the audience, and it's a big deal for her to be here, and I'm appreciative of her, you know, of all the sacrifices that she's made in making time for me. Four years ago, I had the opportunity of being sworn in with my grandmother present. She is no longer here with us. I lost her just a few months after I got into office, as I was sworn in, but she was able to see and be here with me. And although she is not here with me physically, she is here in spirit. But also, not only is she here in spirit, I have my cousin Linda B., who is sitting in the back. She has been instrumental in the grieving process of losing my mother, I mean, my grandmother, I'm sorry, Mom. Of losing my grandmother, but I thought it was very important that she is here today because she has been filling the shoes that my grandmother once filled. I want to thank my team. I have some of them in here, they're like family to me, and none of this, you know, could have not been done without them. A lot of these people that are here, you know, Yvonne and Lisa and Myron, they have been instrumental, Shama, and there's so many more, I can go on and on, but I do appreciate my team that was, you know, kept pushing me forward, even when I felt like I had nothing left, because running for office is, it's a lot, especially when you want to make change in the community, the community that you come from. I'm going to, you know, not take up too much more of your time, I know we have a few more elected officials to get through, but again, I want to thank Peoria Township for allowing me to fulfill a role for another four years. It's been a lot that has gone on in the last four years, and it's gone by really fast, but there's a lot more work to be done. So again, I would like to say thank you.
I do want to congratulate Township Assessor Andrew Curry, and we'll get to hear from you when you get sworn in in the coming months. Thank you. And we're going to go back around to the district council members, and District Two is Councilmember Alex Carmona.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I moved here from Colorado five and a half years ago with my family, and this is not anything I ever thought about doing, but I'm proud to be a part of this horseshoe, proud to be a part of this city. I think that we have the best days ahead of us in this city, and we're all going to work together, I know we are, to make sure that that happens. I want to thank everybody who voted for me, and I want to also thank the people who didn't vote for me. I want everybody to know that I'm going to treat you fairly, with respect, and I'm going to do whatever I can to help you out and be your liaison between you and the city. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to all of my friends who supported me, my family, my kids, but I mostly want to thank my wife, Chelsea. She was my campaign manager, and when you meet Chelsea, you'll know how powerful she is, and she kept me in line, made sure I was where I needed to be, and we make a good team. Sometimes it's hard, but I really want to say that I love you. I also want to thank my Aunt Lucy, her husband Maury, for coming out here from Colorado to witness this. I want to thank my mom back home and my dad. He's looking down on me right now, but I just want to say thank you to everybody who helped me make this happen. Thanks.
Third District Councilmember, Tim Riegenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues and all the guests here tonight, and especially thank you to my constituents. I have to start by saying it's a real honor to be sitting here for the fifth time to be sworn in as the Third District Councilman. I remember the first time I ran, I won by 12 votes, so by the time we got to the swearing in, I was really just exhaling from anticipation, and even though I am the most senior member of the council now around the horseshoe, I'm not the oldest. I think it's appropriate on nights like this, or at least for me, because I am 66 now, that I really get reflective, and I stop and think about the people who have walked along my journey with me, and one of them is here tonight, my first grade teacher, my first grade teacher, Ann Vipon, and talk about making sure the kid gets started on the right foot, you know, she must have done something right all those years ago, so thank you for being here, Ann. And for those of you that know me, you know family is really important, and my parents were never able to sit in on one of these. My brother Ted's here with Emily, his daughter, so my generation's represented, and my five kids, four of the five are here, Irina and Mariah, and the short ones back here, Sam and Moses. But I would just say that, you know, that growing up, the faith that my parents instilled in us as kids is something that hopefully still resonates with me and the future generations of us Riegenbacher's, because they didn't just talk about faith, they demonstrated it on a daily basis with the folks that they encountered, and that's something that I think we all can hold on to, is that our words are important, but our actions are what really defines us. And you know what? Oftentimes, people ask me how I got started, you know, what made you interested in politics? And I have to call out my eighth grade civics teacher, who unfortunately isn't here, but Ed McGraw, hopefully you're watching this on TV somewhere. Ed McGraw was the civics teacher at Central Junior High in East Peoria, where I grew up, and he was also the track coach, and if you would have known me in junior high, you would know I was far from a track athlete, I was far from an athlete, actually, but Ed McGraw was the kind of guy that saw something in this shy, awkward kid and just helped give me a sense of value that I didn't have before, so I think the other teachers in particular that were really powerful in my life were Bill and Charlotte Getman, they were at East Peoria High School. They've both passed away now, but when I think about the influence and sitting around, talking politics with them, even as an adult, it was just, it was something special, and I hope we all got people like that in our lives that years later, we stop and reflect and think, I am who I am because of the investment that these people made in me when I was a kid. But that brings us to tonight, and you might be wondering, five terms, why is he still here? And, well, I ran unopposed, so that's kind of a nice thing, but more importantly, frankly, I love Peoria, you know? It sounds kind of trite, and it sounds kind of silly maybe, but we've got so much going on in this city. There's so many things that we've accomplished in the years that I've been sitting around this horseshoe, working together with all of these people, and as we look to the future, we see so much more to be done and so many opportunities to take us to the next level. And, you know, we talked a lot about Councilman Grab and the way he worked, and I think maybe that would be a good legacy for us, if this council would be known as the 2025 Collaboration Council, you know, the council that with all of its differences, you know, we all have different views of how we think Peoria needs to be, but we're all sitting around this horseshoe because we love Peoria. So I think that should be our challenge tonight, that's what I'm going to strive for, is that as we work together, that we will be collaborating and we will see really cool things happening in our city, so thank you very much for being here, Madam Mayor, it's great to be working with you again.
Fourth District Councilmember, Dr. Andre Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to begin by thanking God. God has truly continued to bless me and give me unde-. God has truly continued to bless me and give me undeserved mercy throughout the course of my life. I'm someone who is not necessarily cut from that political cloth, but I'm someone who just loves his community, and I thank him for the opportunity to serve my community in this capacity. Next, I would like to thank my wife, my wife, Jelisha Allen, who is behind me today, it's actually her birthday as well, too, so talk about spending your birthday at your husband's swearing in ceremony. But she is my rock, she is our guiding star of the Allen household. I would not be here without her, and I appreciate you so much, baby, and the sacrifices that you make for us to be here and for me to serve the constituents of District Four and the city of Peoria. I want to thank my children. I see my oldest looking at me right now, she's a little restless. Shout out to my oldest Barbie Marie, my son Drayton, and then my youngest, Dream, who has been running around here today. We debated, should we get a sitter? But I said, you know what, it's important for her to be here, she's four, and this is such an important moment for our family, and so we're glad to have you here. But thank you so much, kids, for your patience and understanding when daddy's got an event to go to. And so I look forward now that the campaign is concluded to be in more present and coaching some sports coming up. I know we got JFL coming up in the summer, and going to cheerleading tryouts, and my youngest is in gymnastics, and so daddy's going to be around a little bit more, and I appreciate you all for your understanding and knowing that daddy wished he could be there sometimes, but it's so important for us to serve Peoria. Next, I would like to thank my parents, Andre and Sharon Allen, they have been amazing parents. I'll be 36 in a couple of weeks, and they'll be celebrating their 37th wedding anniversary. And I am someone who was just fortunate to have parents who had the ability to love and care for my brothers and I. They made sure that we had everything we need growing up as kids, and so where we were able to not have some of the same challenges and barriers that some of my friends had growing up, and then that has allowed me to be here where I am. So thank you, Mom and Dad, for everything, especially my pops for really showing me what a real man is. So I love you, Big Dre, thank you. Next, I'd like to thank my brothers, Sean and Urban Allen. I always say my first leadership assignment was being the oldest of them two, and we grew up and we had a great blessed childhood, filled with wrestling moves, watching WWE, and I remember we broke Grandma Mary's bed and we had to get those tennis shoes for Christmas, but it made for a good memory. But I love you guys, thank you so much for always being there for me. I've done my best to be a role model for you all, but as we've gotten older and our ages have gotten closer, I take so much from you all as well, too. So again, thank you to my brothers. I want to shout out my campaign volunteers. No one gets elected on their own, it's a lot of knocking on doors, a lot of grassroots efforts connecting with the constituents, especially a district as big and as diverse as District Four. And so thank you too much to Kim McGee, Alex Elger, Natalie Garcia, I apologize if I may forget anybody, Sherri Walker, Lawrence Harden, who drove the car in the St. Patrick's Day parade, and I paid a lot of them in love, and at this level, that's what it's about. So thank you for believing in us. And then I want to conclude by thanking Peoria. Thank you, Peoria, for believing in me. Thank you, Peoria, for realizing that I truly invested in this work. When someone gives you their vote, it is the best currency that they can give, and it is an investment in you, that you'll be their voice, you'll be their hope in some cases, whether it is attacking tall grass concerns, or potholes, or leading economic development. And so thank you so much for Peoria, for believing in the kid from Peoria, Illinois, and I look forward to moving our district forward, serving with this amazing body around this horseshoe, and I promise you, Peoria's best days are ahead. Thank you.
And Fifth District Councilmember, Dennis Seer.
Oh, thank you, I almost broke your knuckle.
Thank you, thank you very much, and so you're the podium tonight. Everybody knows the Fifth District is the engine for the city of Peoria, so it's important I stand in front of you and be accountable to all you. I want to congratulate, everybody has ran, and we'll be serving all together again for two more years. Now, since Chuck is no longer in the room, we can pick on him a little bit, he's not here to defend himself, so again, the good news for this new council is that all our meetings will be at least an hour shorter the next two years. Sorry, Chuck. First of all, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the next four years. You and I have been joining the hip for many, many years now, so I'm looking forward really for the next four years, and early two years with all my colleagues at the at-large. Also, I want to thank Lord Jesus Christ, my personal Savior. I mean, I've been a financial advisor for 29 years, so I know very well about financial planning and planning for people, but good Lord always with me and guide my every step, every step on a daily basis, so I'm very thankful for that. Also, I want to thank you, some people that have been with me for a long, long time. First of all, I want to say thank you to my girlfriend, Kathy, she survived her first campaign, so congratulations, that was great, she knocked on doors with me and was a driver and all that, so it was fun. Also, some of my friends are here tonight, I'm very lucky to have them, and I wrote down some names, because I always, when I start naming names, I always make, forget somebody. So I'm going to start Doug and his wife, Colleen. Doug's been with me three campaigns, he's knocked on probably more doors than I have. Thank you very much for all your effort, Doug, and I thank him every day that he showed up, and he was there all the time. And Colleen, thank you very much for letting him spend a lot of time with me knocking on doors. Dr. Brunz and his wife Cheryl, and they've been with me also for three campaigns. We always use this truck, and we put up all our signs, residential signs, and mainly commercial signs, so thank you, Doc, and again, thank you, Cheryl, for letting him go. Brendan, same way, is with me, he's been with me a couple of campaigns now, I think, and the same thing, just part of the team, put some signs out, especially those commercial signs. Todd Davis, been great, he's been with me three campaigns also, so thank you for all the work you have done, Todd. Gary and Kelly in the back of the room over there, know, I like to smoke cigars and have a glass of bourbon once in a while, and it's great after a long day of campaigning. He's got the best house, sorry about that, I'm not going to tell your address, but if you want a nice glass of bourbon and a cigar and relax after a long day. Gary and Kelly, thank you very much, your husk tally and all the, and your friendship really for over the years, so thank you very much. And the last one, not the least, Becky Jordan, Becky and Scott, Becky's been my treasurer for three years, not three years, but three campaigns also. Thank you very much for all the work, she keeps me straight and keeps me honest, and thank you, Scott, for letting her spend a lot of time doing that work for me. I hope I got everybody on there on that list, I think I did this time. So my story, I told my story many times on the campaign, basically, I'm originally from suburb of Montreal, Canada, and I've been in the United States for 40 years now, believe it or not, I used to play professional hockey, I got here playing for the River in 845 season, it's been 40 years already, I just can't believe it. About 20 years ago, last September, okay, September 3rd, 2004, we had a judge, Judge Joe Billy McDade, now some of you guys probably know that name, he's the gentleman that conducted ceremony for me to become an American. So I can't believe it's been 20 years already, I'm starting on September 3rd this year, it'll be the 21st year of becoming an American, and I'm so proud of that, I mean, I'm so proud of calling Peoria my home, okay? And I have an eight-year track record now, and I think I've been blessed, I've been very lucky to work with a lot of my colleagues, but also the staff, city manager and the staff, they're just incredible here in Peoria, very professional, and it's been great to meet the last eight years, I'm really looking forward to the next four years. Many accomplishments the last eight years, my proudest accomplishment is really the relationships I've been able to build with people. You guys, my colleague and everybody, a lot of people that are not here tonight, but I'm very, very proud of that. At our age, when you talk about being 66, I'm a little younger than him, but it's relationship really, at this point in my life, what the most important thing. So I'm blessed, I've met a lot of people over the last four years, I've met a lot more people over the last eight years, and it's just a bring, it's been a great time, really. I think that's all I want to cover tonight, so thank you for all the people that voted for me. I'll let my record speak for itself, and I'm just looking to do it more in the next four years. There's still some things out there that I'd like to finish, some project we started over the last eight years, that hopefully we can finish some of them the next four years. So thank you very much for being here, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all my new colleagues, looking forward to the next two years.
And lastly, I want to take this time to congratulate all of my colleagues who were reelected to their position, and my new colleague, Councilmember Carmona, I look forward to working with each of you. And I know there's little time left, I actually have a good number of people waiting at the Riverfront Museum, and they can't eat until I get there. So I'm going to try to be brief, I have so many to thank, but again, so little time, so I'll try to be brief. I thank God for keeping me in good health with a sound mind, and for my strength in being able to hold this position. It's the honor of my life to serve in this role, and I've been blessed by the voters of Peoria to serve a second term, so I just, I thank God for that, I thank the voters for giving me more time to continue this important work, it's so important. And again, Councilman Riegenbach talked about loving Peoria, we're all here because we love Peoria, and each one of you has so many talents individually, but just think about us putting these talents together and how much we can accomplish together, and that's what I look forward to over these next few years. I want to thank my family, my father's in heaven now, my mother's, as I mentioned, 87 years old, she's watching from home, so Mom, thank you, thank you for being my first teacher. She raised three children to be independent, to be leaders, and my sister, Robin, is here, my brother, Robert, they're both leaders in their own right, and they love this community just like I do. I have birthed one child, she's sitting right here, Brandy Bryant, and I have, from her came my granddaughters, Briasia and Asia, and then from Briasia came two grand, great-granddaughters, I mean, girls ruling our family, that's just... But, so we're a family full of girls, and girls who, you know, don't hesitate to take charge in many ways, and I thank my parents for raising us that way. But I have bonus daughters, too, and they're pretty much all women, and one of them is sitting right here, and this is my bonus daughter, Representative Jahann Gordon Booth. She talked me into running for this office, she kept trying to convince me that after I got elected at-large, after another couple of years, that I should run for mayor, and I said no, but she didn't give up, and there were some other people who were also pushing for that, and eventually I gave in, but I want to thank you, Jahann, you did not make a mistake, I thank you for pushing me, and I thank you for the support given by many, many friends, including Senator Dave Kaler, who I've been a friend with, he's been my friend, a teacher, a mentor for over 40 years. I thank you for being here tonight, and the difference that you two have made in my life and made for this community and the state of Illinois, I just thank you, you're the example that I can follow in terms of loving your community and working really hard in a dedicated way to give back. So I thank you. I want to thank Jay for your love and support, you've always had my back, I appreciate that I can always count on you for anything. I've had so many great friends, some of them are in this room, and some of them are over at the Riverfront Museum, but one friend that I gained after I got elected to this position, he actually became my campaign manager this time around, but he's been part of my advisory team, helped me to write speeches, he's a mentor, just a wonderful supporter and amazing leader, and that's Jim Johnson, so I thank you, Jim, for the leader that you are, and the difference that you've made in my life. And so lastly, I want to just thank my colleagues around the horseshoe, each and every one of you, I want to thank you for loving Peoria, for the leadership role that you've been playing, and for what we're going to do together, the 11 of us over this next four years, what we're going to do together to make a difference in terms of improving the quality of life, addressing this housing crisis issue that we have. We're going to address this housing crisis issue, we're going to address the quality of life, and we're going to do it with the help of an amazing staff that we have. City Manager Patrick, you've built, I think, one of the best teams, leadership teams I've seen this city have, and I've been around for decades, and I've watched this council and interacted with this council for decades, but you've got an amazing team, and you're an amazing leader, and I look forward to, you know, continuing to work with you. We're not always going to agree, you know that, we have our differences, we're going to oppose each other, we're going to, but you know what? Our diversity is our strength. Our diversity is our strength, and we are going to have, identify our common goals and work collectively through them. So I just, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you. So we're going to get on with the council business, Madam Clerk.
We have one town item. 25-102 is a communication from the township officials with a request to approve a resolution authorizing named bank to act as depositories of the town of the city of Peoria, and authorizing the town of the city of Peoria to accept and release securities for safekeeping held by a third party, and authorizing named bank to honor checks, drafts, etc., and repeal the resolution adopted on May 4th, 2021.
Can I get a motion to approve, Councilwoman Gordon Young?
I move to approve.
I'm sorry, trustee, can I get a second? Trustee Allen, any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the city portion of the agenda. 25-103 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to approve public official bonds for the mayor, the city clerk, the city treasurer, and the city comptroller from Calendar and Company.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, these are the security bonds that we have for certain elected officials, this is one of the actions we have to take at this first meeting of the new council.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Kelly? Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
25-104 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to approve a resolution authorizing named banks to honor checks, drafts, etc., of the city of Peoria, authorizing the city treasurer, city manager, and the finance director comptroller to accept and release securities for safekeeping held by a third party.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll let, since our finance director stepped to the fore, Finance Director Craddy answer this one for you.
So really, this resolution is just telling our banks to add newly-elected Treasurer Jim Montalongo to our accounts, so it's really just the process that we follow to direct them to add him as a signer.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Craddy. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and to onboard.
Do we have any cards?
No, we do not.
I would like to ask Pastor Chad Mambek to come forth with the benediction. Thank you for being here, Pastor.
Madam Mayor, I will say that I have been instructed by a certain city councilman of District Three to not preach but pray, so I will do that accordingly. A certain city councilman. Let us pray. Father, good evening. Thank you for life and breath and our being, and the opportunity to gather here tonight to celebrate what was, and celebrate what is, and look forward to what is to come. God, I want to ask boldly that you would lay your hand of provision, protection, and wisdom upon the men and women of this local government. That, God, you would give them what you call in James 3:17, wisdom from above. This wisdom you described... This wisdom you describe as pure and peace-loving, gentle at all times, willing to yield to others, full of mercy and the fruit of good deeds. This wisdom shows no favoritism and is always sincere. I pray that you would give that wisdom to each man and woman that is serving this city. God, we acknowledge and know beyond a shadow of a doubt that no one in this room loves the people of this city more than you. You adore this city, you've been placing your hand of favor upon this city, you have been stirring in this city in miraculous ways, and we want you to continue to do that. Help those, help those who are struggling, help them to feel seen by the people that sit around this horseshoe, help them to feel represented, and give the men and women that lead our city boldness, humble conviction, to fight for what they believe in, but do it in the spirit of unity and togetherness, knowing that they do not represent themselves, but they represent us, they represent the city, and I pray that they'll represent you well. Thank you for Mayor Ali, her heart for you, her passion for this city, and I pray you give her this same wisdom as she leads, as we have decided and chosen her to lead our city. I thank you, God, for the many words of affirmation that were spoken here tonight. I thank you for the peace and love and appreciation that I watched each official have for one another, and I pray, God, I pray boldly that this would continue, that despite differences, God, we would find a way to come together to make this one of the greatest cities in America. We thank you, thank you, thank you for tonight, thank you for safety tonight. I pray that you would take every single person in this room home safely to our families. It's in your son's mighty and precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. We are adjourned, thank you.